This is a test of the city of Palaca audio system.
This is a test of the city of Palaca audio system.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City Commission meeting, January 6, 2025. We're starting this meeting at 7:30 p.m. I'm calling the meeting to order. We'll start with the invocation led by Chaplain Mulberry and then the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Bora.
Good evening, everyone. Father, in the name of Jesus, here we are again in your presence, thanking you for another day, thanking you for your loving kindness and tender mercy. We pray, God, your blessings upon your people. Even now, dear God, as we seek to please you in all that we do, pray for the wisdom that is necessary to lead and guide this committee. Thank you for those who have come in aboard, and we give you praise for their work sake. Blessed even now, God, I pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, could we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Tammy McCaskill. Excuse for the record.
Yes, and if that is appropriate, Mayor and Commissioner.
Finish roll call first.
Yes, please.
That, yes, please.
Commissioner Justin Campbell, Sr.
Present.
Commissioner Will Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Rufus Borum.
Present.
Mayor Robbie Craft.
Present.
You have, you have a quorum in the chambers, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tammy McCaskill could not be here tonight, and she did ask that I read this statement. Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, Interim City Managers, City Staff and Citizens, it has been one of the greatest honors of my life to be elected and re-elected by our citizens to serve our city of Palaka as Commissioner for Group One over these past eight years. As someone who grew up here and loves this community immensely, I have always been inspired by the strength, resilience and promise of our great city. Today, it is with mixed emotions that I shift forward from the office of Palaka City Commissioner. Be assured, I wholeheartedly welcome and salute Ms. Annie Henderson-Davis as she steps into this important role and assume the awesome responsibility of legislating on behalf of Palaka. Although my strict physician's orders precluded me from personally attending this evening's swearing-in ceremony, I extend my heartfelt congratulations and sincere support to Commissioner Davis and wish her great success in her imminent term. May the entire commission continue to build upon the foundation of growth and opportunity that makes Palaka a city of unlimited potential. In conclusion, I have complete confidence that our newly elected Commissioner will serve with integrity and vision. To the citizens of Palaka, thank you for allowing me to serve you these eight past years. I remain committed to the progress of our community and look forward to supporting our bright future in every positive way possible with warm regards. This is from our Commissioner Tammy McCaskill, outgoing City of Palaka Commissioner, Group One for the years of 2016 to 2024.
Thank you, and a thank you to Commissioner McCaskill for all her wonderful years of service and sacrifice to this community, and we also want her to recover and be well soon.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to open the floor to public comments. I'm going to open it up to public comments general and also specific to agenda item. Is there anybody here for public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and move right along on the agenda to the swearing-in ceremony. We're going to start with the administration of the oath of office to the Honorable Commissioner Will Jones, conducted by Alicia R. Washington, Circuit Court Judge and First African-American Administrative Judge of Putnam County. And if you both come up here and stand right in front of the dais, and I will flip this. I'm excited out here, I'm swearing in a local celebrity around here. Can I call him Slurp too? Can I call him that too? All right. You want to read?
Which one I want to borrow?
You raise your right hand, put the left hand. Okay, all right. All right, so I'm gonna read the oath of office, and I'll have you repeat after me. It says, "Oath of Office, State of Florida, County Putnam." You don't have to say that. I just want it to be official. All right, I Willie Slur Jones.
I Willie Jones.
Do solemnly swear affirm.
Do solemnly swear affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
And the Charter and ordinances.
And the Charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Palaka.
Of the city of Palaka.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
Of the state.
Of the state.
And that I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully perform.
And faithfully perform.
The duties.
The duties.
Of Palaka City Commissioner, Group Three.
Of Palaka City Commission, Group Three.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
And I'll mess it up. Oh, I'm sorry. So help me God. I'm sorry. So help me God.
Help me God.
All right.
Can I get my family up? Could I please have my immediate family up?
We want to now ask Mr. Overtrough to come up and present the election certificate. Election certificate.
Sorry, Mr. Overtrough. Congratulations on being re-elected. That's the one thing about elections. Sometimes we welcome brand-new people, and other times we welcome back people. So I just want to say congratulations. You were elected on the 5th of November. Your term starts today, and it will go all the way through the 7th day of January 2029. So congratulations. Let me do the other one.
A few, accent, a few, obviously coming up here.
Good evening. I would like to say.
Turn on the mic, please.
Good evening. I would like to say a few words. You know, I'm a man of few words. Don't speak a lot. And I stand before you today humbled and proud that my city elected me to be re-elected as a City Commissioner. I want to thank each and every one of you, citizens here in Palaka that voted, people that couldn't even vote, that actually supported me in ways you wouldn't believe, just by acts of kindness, utilizing their resources, and even just by their face. They couldn't vote in a city election, however, their face card, the people that they know, and they put out the word that I was their guy, and that, that meant a lot to me in this race. This race could have went any, any way, my, in my favor or against me. And, but I knew that God was on my side. I have a spirit of discernment. Let me tell you something. Doing this thing, I learned a lot about people. I learned a lot about myself, you know. Perseverance. If I had to say one word that could strive it, I'd say perseverance. A lot of obstacles that were put in our way through this campaign, and I want to thank the people that stood by me and still with me through this campaign. And so I know I was gonna forget some people, so I do have notes here. Usually I just go off the top of my head. But I want to first give honor to God for giving me this opportunity and the honor that it is to be up here and work on this dais with these other Commissioners. And if I had to tell you one thing, and it's gonna be, it's an humbling experience when you get up here. The first four years, the first two, you're going alone. And if I would have been defeated, I felt I've been disservice to the city because you don't really start working until about your third, your third year up here because you got to learn this job, learn what you're supposed to do up here. There's a lot of people that you, you try to appease. I'm not gonna say please, try to appease because you want to do the right thing. And when I'm up here, when I was elected and I took this oath, I take this oath seriously, and I just want everybody that had confidence in me to know that I'm gonna do the right thing, and I won't embarrass family. I won't embarrass the city. I was okay, Todd. Look at you. But I will prove to you that you made the right choice. As I take this oath, I promise that I would do my very best to make the most appropriate decision that we are faced with, to move this city forth, forward, excuse me. I will listen to you, and I will continue to be your voice. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank a lot of people publicly. And I want to start out, my beautiful wife. She was out there every day, get off of work to support me. When I didn't want to go, she pushed me. And she'll tell me sometime I want to slack off, and my daughter Jordan always say, "Dad, today, you're just slacking off." And it was a lot of days that I wanted to, but honey, I really appreciate you standing by me and being that push that I needed. So I want to openly acknowledge you in there. My family that have also persevered and sacrificed for me. I want to thank you guys. And the support that you gave me in this endeavor. My campaign team, Team Jones. Would you please stand up if you were part of Team Jones? Just stand up, please. I have to publicly let people know you're awesome. What, Mr. Jacob, there? Jacob Spell, would you please stand up? You can stand up, Team Jones, but I need you to stand up. Mr. Jacob Spell, special thanks to you.
What you have done, Mr. Spell. Appreciate it. And I want it to roll, though. I really do.
My brother Porter Johnson. My brother. My brother. A lot of people in this campaign said, "Man, I believe your brother wants you to win more than you want to win." Because my brother was everywhere doing everything possible to help me win.
Thank you, bro.
There's some names I want to go ahead and mention that was there. When I say there, folk, I mean. That's allergies. That's what that is. I'm, I'm talking about people who stuck their Saturdays, their Sundays, get off of work, and sign away, go door-to-door. We went knocking door-to-door. We did grassroots because I know this was gonna be a hard fight, and they did this. And these are some of the people that led the charge. And I know I'm gonna forget some people, but these are the people that I know was there every day and was my top contributor, toughest. And besides my brother, Mr. Spell, I want to go with Ms. Mary Norwood. Mary Norwood was there with me every day. Please stand up, Mary, because you was every day, every day going out with me, rather, knocking on doors. And, and Mary, Mary had some challenges, but she didn't care. She couldn't stand up long, but she was gonna stand up, and she was gonna be out there with me. And sometimes she beat me to the spot where we needed to be, and I really want to thank you. I want to acknowledge you publicly because you're so sweet in what you did to me, so I appreciate you. And I'm gonna be go, I'm gonna be fast. All right, Kim, I'm gonna move fast. Mr. Jeremy Alexander and Alexander family, I sincerely thank you guys. Josh, Josh was running a race, and he still was, "Hey, you need anything? Can I help you? Hey, where are you with this? Where are you with that?" And I appreciate that. It goes a long way. And I can say this publicly, that this commission had said, "We're gonna start working harder with the county." And I think a new, fresh man in that county that want to bridge the gaps, he is what we need to, to help us make that transition and make that a smooth transition of working with, a work relationship. All right, Mary Bass, Beverly Island, Ms. Patricia Brown, stand up, Ms. Brown. Again, every day out there with me, again, and stay sometime longer than I would stay. I all played a vital role. Mrs. Ms. Daniels. Mrs. Constance Daniels, would you please stand up? Special because Ms. Constance Daniels ran the race for our judgeship here in Putnam County and wasn't successful. But as soon as she got over the situation, she joined my team, and she didn't just join, she led my team. The night of the election, did poll watching, and she went, and we were getting the tally. We were getting the tally, and Ms., Ms., you can sit down. And Ms. Daniels, she reminded me of everything that I needed to do, a vital part because you know what? Sometimes in this race, you could, you stay so focused, you don't see, and you miss some of the small things, and she was an integral part, and I want to thank you for that. Where's your mother? Ms. Little Bell Gordon. Ms. Little Bell, can you walk up here, please? Ms. Little Bell Gordon. I must do this. Discernment, tell me this. I don't want to tell Ms. Little Bell age, but Ms. Little Bell Gordon, Mr. Jacob Spell, were the two senior people in my camp, but they outworked. I can, I think I can say this, outworked everybody. On the night of the election, Ms. Little Bell came out that morning and didn't leave her post. Stayed out, and we were out standing up. I said, "Ms. Little Bell, let me give you a chair." She said, "No, honey. I got it." So I'm holding the sign, and she stood up there and walked. I had to call it, and I started to go outside. I, I can stand up here before you and say that, yeah, I deserve this. It's all in God, and it's the people in this city, the great city of Palaka, that see the good in me and knowing that I have a passion for the city of Palaka. And I'll be remiss if I didn't say, and I'm closing, last thing it would be, my D9 Extended Family, the ladies of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. You want to be young. And then ladies in blue and white. The Zetas will show up, and they, they are there, and I thank you guys for all your support. The women of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. These are ladies in crimson and cream. You can hold, hold your hand up. I really thank you guys. And the ladies of Alpha Tau Sorority Incorporated, Ms. Flag. And the men of Omega Phi Phi Fraternity Incorporated. I really thank you as my extended family for showing up and showing out when needed and when you're called. And again, I want to thank all of you for coming out, and I want to thank all that supported me and re-elected me. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, we're going to go on to the administrat- administration of the oath of office to the Honorable Commissioner Annie Henderson Davis, conducted by Amory Genusa Conducted by Amory Genusa, Circuit Court Judge, and the Holy Bible, held by Ronnie Davis' husband, penning by Jessica Davis' daughter. All right. I got the hard part. I gotta make sure I guess. Please raise your hand. I. I. Annie Henderson Davis. Annie Henderson Davis. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support. That I will support. Protect. Protect. And defend the Constitution. And defend the Constitution. And government of the United States of America. And government of the United States of America. And of the state of Florida. And of the state of Florida. And the Charter and ordinances. And the Charter and ordinances. Of the city of Palaka. Of the city of Palaka. That I am duly qualified to hold office. That I am duly qualified to hold office. Under the Constitution of the state. Under the Constitution of the state. And that I will well and faithfully perform. And that I will well and faithfully perform. The duties of Palaka City Commissioner. The duties of Palaka City Commissioner. Group One. Group One. On which I am now about to enter. On which I am now about to enter. So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations. I'm just having a trouble with my phone. Jessica? Jessica? Okay. You guys stand right here. Now I'm going to ask Mr. Overtrough to come forward and present the election certificate. Mr. Overtrough, thank you.
As I said, elections are a time when we welcome back members, and then we also welcome new members. And I would be remiss if I wished Tammy was here tonight but to say thank you to her for all that she has done for this community. One of the things, and she won't mind me saying this, is when she was running, every afternoon, during early voting, after she got off school, she came and stood within the hundred feet that she could stand over by the Chinese restaurant, and every day I go over and hug her and say, "How do I think you're doing?" "Oh, I think you're doing fine, Tammy. You're out here working hard." "You did a lot of those same things, and so I congratulate you." "I present you with this certificate. Your term starts today, and just like Commissioner Jones, it will end on the 7th day of January of 2029." Congratulations.
I do. I, I would like, now, let me be clear. I'd like my Henderson family, my Smith family, my Davis family.
I do. I, I would like, now, let me be clear. I'd like my Henderson family, my Smith family, my Davis family.
Good evening, everyone. I first want to recognize my late parents, OC Henderson and Claritha Smith Henderson. You know, my parents set the example for us to be active in our community, to not just talk about things, but to do things. You want things to be better, be part of the solution. And I just want to honor them today. But ladies and gentlemen, my esteemed colleagues, friends, my family. I am so honored and humbled to stand before you this evening as your newly elected city commissioner. This journey would not have been possible without the unwavering support and encouragement of my loved ones, especially my husband. My daughter, my daughter Alex, my daughter Jessica, my daughter Alexis, my son Justin. My sister and brother-in-law, y'all, my family is amazing. Um, and I'm like, um, Commissioner Jones, I don't wanna start calling a lot of names, cause right now I'm so full. To my Henderson family, I love you all. My cousin Warren, cousin Sandra, cousin Erica, thank you guys so much. Cousin Gina, um, just my family. Now, I wanna talk about my family and loves, cause you see they're deep. The Davis family does not play about me. And I am so, so grateful. But to my brothers-in-law, my sisters-in-law, my cousins, thank you guys so much. But I need to give a special thank you to Audrey Wise. The best campaign manager who kept a sister moving when a sister was taking naps. But I thank you guys so, so much. I just really want you to know more than anything that this could not have been possible without the support of so many. My friends, my old neighbors from the north side, my new neighbors from the south historic district. Um, my classmates, class of seventy-nine Palaka High School. But I just want you to know, and my church family, my Mount Tabor Church family, my first lady and classmate, Ms. Tara Sina Flag. But, um, I really just wanna thank all of you. And I wanna thank every single voter who entrusted me with this great responsibility. I extend my heartfelt gratitude to each of you. Throughout the campaign, I had the privilege of meeting many of you and listening to your concerns, your hopes, your aspirations for our city. We share a vision of a vibrant, inclusive and thriving community. And your voices have guided me and my vision for our future. And I am committed to work tirelessly to turn that vision into reality. As a city commissioner, I vow and pledge the three things that I can, that I have control over. And that is integrity, transparency and accountability. You can expect me to prioritize and foster and, um, the needs of our residents. For me to advocate for equitable policies and foster an environment where every individual feels valued and heard. And together we will tackle the challenges, and yes, we have quite a few, and we'll also seize the opportunities. In the coming months, I will address key issues such as getting a city manager hired. Working with my colleagues to make that happen and with our city staff. Someone who is a good fit for the city of Palaka for this time, right now. We want to enhance public safety. Those are two priorities. We have many priorities, but we have to be safe. And we have to have the right person to lead our city. We also, I will also discover how to best move our city forward in a way that serves all citizens. I believe an engaged and informed, uh, community is the foundation of effective governance. We cannot do it without your input. Your willingness to share ideas and hold us accountable is vital to our success. And together we can build a city that we are all proud to call home. Once again, I'm deeply grateful for this opportunity to serve as your city commissioner. I am excited, excited about the journey. Yeah, a little bit scared, but it's okay. I'll do my homework. And the great work that we will accomplish together. So let's move forward with hope, determination and a shared commitment for the betterment of our city. Palaka, Florida, the gem city, and to some of you blip. Thank you, and let's get to work. Come on up.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
May I have the pleasure of vowing to the roll call Commissioner Annie Henderson Davis?
You may.
Thank you. Present.
Exciting times for Palaka. Um, at this point, do we have a motion to adjourn? Go ahead, Commissioner.
I got a comment.
Well, we, we wanna have comments just after that.
Well, I just want to say to my fellow, um, commissioners newly elected and reelected. A charge to keep we have, a God to glorify, a never dying soul to save and fit it for the sky. To serve the present age, my calling to fulfill. O may it all my powers engage as we do God's will. Let's continue to work.
With that, can we have a motion to adjourn and then we'll open it for Mayor and Commissioner closing comments.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move it, we adjourn.
Can we do the closing?
A floor for Commissioner and Mayor comments. Commissioner Campbell already made a comment. Do you have anything further to say?
No, he doesn't.
Okay. Commissioner Jones?
I have anything further.
Commissioner Borum?
Yes, I wanna, um, certainly thank, uh, Commissioner McCaskill, um, for her eight years dedicated hard work and service um, to this commission in this community. A lot of time people don't understand what our roles are. And, um, again, like you heard Commissioner Jones stated, his first two years, he was in learning mode. There's no cookbook for this role up here. You are elected into an office that a lot of time people don't know what they're doing. And people are electing people into office and not knowing sometimes what they stand for or what they are willing to deliver back to the, uh, the community. But again, we've had people who have dedicated their time and made the sacrifices to commit to this community. So we wanna certainly thank Commissioner McCaskill for the work. Her presence will be missed on this board. Again, I wanna, uh, thank for, uh, Commissioner Jones for rejoining this board. And again, like, uh, you can see in the audience, uh, his work spoke for him. And he's back on this board, ready to put some more work in. And I wanna, uh, thank our newly elected, um, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner, Ms. Annie Davis. Um, looking forward to working with her, had great conversations with her. She has energy. I've seen her. Um, since she's been in Palaka, came back to Palaka, she was working. Um, when she first hit the ground back here in Palaka from where, where she came, from, from Atlanta. And so she's back here and she's been putting in the work. I, we've, we've had numerous, uh, community events. Um, I didn't know who she was, her and her husband. You see, see one, you see the other. But she have put in the work. And I'm looking forward to working with her, um, on this board to help try to make this community a better place. And that's what all of my fellow commissioners and mayors. So again, we, we, we ask you guys to stay involved. Don't just learn about the hearsay, stay plugged in, be to the meeting. If churches, uh, uh, nonprofit organizations, whatever it may be, individuals. If you don't read the newspaper, just look at, come, come, be in the meeting or be live on Zoom or whatever in Zoom land. Just understand and know what's going on in your city and don't hear all the gossip that you hear out on Facebook and try to render judgment against people who are serving that. And so that's what I ask the community. We wanna, want you guys to stay involved and we do our very best to keep you informed. So again, I wanna thank our board members for being here. Thank you for, um, your, um, your elect, your election. And I thank, uh, Commissioner Jones for his reelection. So we're here to work.
I wanna thank Commissioner McCaskill again. We don't wanna forget that since she wasn't able to be present for her eight years of service. It is a full-time commitment, people. It is kind of described as a part-time position, but in fact, it takes a lot more time, uh, personal time and a lot of thick skin. So, uh, thank you, Commissioner McCaskill. I don't know if, welcome back, but thank you, Commissioner Jones, for staying with us, I think. We'll find out. Teasing you, teasing you. You're giving me a hard time. And welcome, Commissioner Davis. Our first time I met Ms. Davis, when she moved, we live in the same neighborhood. When she moved there, she came by my front doors and my porch was like, hi. It's like, who is this woman that just says hi to anybody? But I found out who she was and that she's wonderful and that she loves the city as we all do and wants it to be the best it can be. So again, thank you all. We've got a lot of work, but we can do it.
Yes.
And with that. Okay, go.
I also would like to congratulate you to your seat and I know that you will do a great job. And I would be remiss if I wouldn't say, uh, to Commissioner McCaskill, um, you, you're being thought about in our prayers. And we're gonna miss your leadership as well, Commissioner. Commissioner, he was a great model up here. And, uh, during those two years of learning, Commissioner McCaskill actually was a great mentor. And I wanted to put that out there in the public as well. She served eight years and, um, she was diligent in her work. Again, welcome aboard and thank you, Ms. McCaskill.
Thank you. And now with that, go ahead.
Madam Chair, yes, I, I do need to say a couple of more thank yous. I would be remiss if I did not thank Mary Lawson Brown. Ms. Brown, please stand up. And Ms. Brown was my mama when I was in school with her kids. She has provided me amazing information, um, on this and guidance on this journey. And I thank you personally, Ms. Brown, from the bottom of my heart to my pastor, Pastor Flag. Thank you so much for your drive. And to Judge Janusa. When I was asked to, um, identify judge, I was like, I, I don't know. I don't know. I only know Judge Janusa, who had such a, um, hard fought race. And who did it with grace and dignity and consistency. So I just want you to know it was an honor to have you to do this for me. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, you want?
Okay, yes, I, I had one more coming. I didn't know Ms. Brown was in the audience. Um, but you know, I, I don't know if she's standing up now or. She's, she's small in stature, but she big. She's, she, she's a giant. But, uh, uh, Ms. Ms. Brown, she dedicated thirty-six of her years of service to this community. Um, and, and I think. Can't thank her enough for all the things that I don't wanna go on and on, but I, I, I do wanna just say this and, and, and be done with it. But, um, everywhere Ms. Brown went, um, she took, uh, as we came in in twenty fifteen, elected in November, uh, twenty fourteen. But came in and she, uh, everywhere she went, whether it was Tallahassee, whether DC or whatever, around the state and across the country. Um, people know her. Her footprint, her fingerprint is on a lot of things that people don't know. And she helped guide this commission in a lot of different ways. And a lot of times you don't have that, um, uh, that mentorship. Um, there's no, uh, sunshine about this because basically these things were things that we did to go and take care of city business, but not to, um, go on and on and on. But, um, that young lady, she, um, really, she have touched many, many hearts and, and, and minds and led people. She's always saying, good, better, best, never let it rest till your good is better and your better is best. We're better together. And I, I, and I, and I thank her for instilling that in me. And again, that's how we, we're gonna make our city much better. Thank you.
I just wanted to acknowledge, um, Commissioner McCaskill, um, and her role that she has played in this commission. Um, she has sat on this dais and she took a lot of ails. Um, she took a lot of losses, but she still was dedicated to her role as commissioner. Um, and so I definitely am going to miss her, our eye contact, um, when we are on the dais. But again, her dedication spoke for her. Even in the midst of everything that she was faced with, she did not let the city of Palaka be on the back burner. So for that, we are eternally grateful for her commitment to this city. And I know it's not a goodbye. It's just a see you later.
No further comments. We're going to have the closing prayer led by Reverend Powell Flag, please.
Shall we all stand in reverence our hearts to Almighty God? Gracious Lord, we bow before you on such an auspicious occasion. Lord, we come with an attitude of gratitude to appreciate the love that is in this room. Lord, we thank you for our mayor. We thank you for each of our commissioners. We thank you for our newly elected commissioner. We thank you for the administrative staff and the entire staff, including Chief of the Police Department. Chief of the Fire Department, our city attorney, interim city manager. Lord God, we need you. We need you in front of us to lead us. We need you in front of us to lead us. We need you beside us to guide us. Lord, we need a spirit of consensus and unity in our city. We need you, God, to move upon each of our hearts. It's easy to talk it. We've got to walk it. Lord, we want our city to be excellent. We want our leaders to lead by precept and example. And Lord, we are standing on your word. Your word is settled in heaven. The grass withereth, the flower fated, but your word stands forever. Except you build a house, the workman labor is in vain. Except you keep the city, the watchman wicked, but in vain. So dear God, lead us, guide us, direct us, instruct us. Give us grace for the race and peace for the pathway. Give us joy for the journey. Help us, dear God, as a city, as a county, as a state, as a nation, as a world, to turn to you. For you are the source of all of our help and hope. God, you are the only one that can make us great. You're the only one that can grant us perfect peace and jubilant joy and liberating love and gracious grace and magnificent mercy. And Lord, we're determined to trust you even when we can't track you. So God, where we are weak, make us strong. Lord, where we are down, lift us up. Heavenly Father, don't just unite us, reunite us. Don't just renew us, restore us and help us all to walk by faith and not by sight. For Lord, we love our city. All of us have diverse opinions and different ideas. But help us, God, to lay aside differences and pull together so that we can be victorious. God, we pray a special prayer upon Commissioner Tammy McCaskill. Lord, meet her at a point of need. For you are the great physician. You are burden bearer and a heavy load sharer. And you alone make ways out of no way. God, even some in this room may be feeble in their bodies. But God, we know that you are above able. Thank you, Lord, for these legislators. Thank you, God, for a city of citizens who are willing to run this race with patience. Now, Lord, as we go separate ways, we're leaving this place, but not your presence. Take care of us all and bring us back together at a pointed time and place that we may continue to seek your face and do your will. It's all in Christ Jesus' name, and we all said amen. God bless you.
I also want to quickly say thank you to city clerk Sunny Trans Romero. This is her last official city meeting. She will be heading to a new job. And those are big shoes to fill with Sunny's departure, and we will truly miss her. Thank you.